I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call.
Mayor Dave Dillon.
Here.
Council members Ken Mueller.
Here.
Norris Johnson.
Here.
Lindsay Larson.
Here.
Lori Game. Lori Game is absent.
Any motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Discussion, I have two new business items to add. Under new business, item thirteen E one, access road to market property near the liquor store, order plans and specs. We need that motion on that. And then thirteen J one, possibly looking at changing the date of the June council meeting to Tuesday, June 20th. That was my fault. Can I get a motion second?
I'll make a motion for that.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Agenda passes. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
So move.
Second. On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of minutes April 20th, 2023, approval of bills, resolution 2315 approving donations. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda passes. Open forum, if there's anyone here tonight that would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, please give your name and address and you'll have a chance to speak. First, we did have someone that did sign in, Mr. Hollenkamp. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Dan Hollenkamp. I live at 605 Central Avenue South, Malacca, Minnesota. Good evening. For a number of years, I have regularly attended these meetings. I have found them helpful and informative, and they have given me an increased pride in my community. The work this council and the city employees do to keep things civil and functioning are not small things. Thank you. I do apologize for not attending last month's meeting. I had encountered an unforeseeable circumstance and was not able to attend. I did a review of the video from April 20th meeting, and I was very disappointed in this council's decision to reject the ordinance allowing residents to have four chickens in the city limits of Malacca. Over the years, a number of residents have come before this council and have requested to raise a small number of chickens for various reasons. Each time the councils rejected the proposal, at the council meeting April 21st, 2022, one resident brought this topic before the council again. When I took over the agenda, I put forth the extra effort and obtained a list of over 100 names of residents of the city of Malacca. I found that not only was there support from the people of the city to have chickens, I also discovered that over 90% of the residents sampled were in favor of having chickens. I made my request to the council at the June 21st, 2022, and I received an open-minded, if not positive, response. At the time, Councilman Dillon said, "I have changed my thoughts on it," which he continued to express his openness to chickens in town. This is found at one hour and four minutes in the video from that meeting. I was informed that I could proceed with my request for the zone change and submit my request to the planning commission. The planning commission likewise was open to the idea. They approved the desire to have chickens in the city of Malacca. Following this, life happened, and the ordinance was tabled until it could be properly reviewed and all parties could be present for a discussion and a vote. A year after the process began, the ordinance was brought before the city council. The discussion began at minute seven and 44 seconds and ended at minute nine and 28 seconds. According to the video on the website, the city website, there was barely any discussion on the topic. The only mention of the council discussing this topic at any length was made by Mayor Dillon at minute eight twenty. I was very disappointed that in under two minutes, the council rejected this effort four to one. No reason given for the residents of this community for the rejection, a simple vote that ignored the will of the people of Malacca. I am not looking for reasons. I don't need answers. What I do request is that this council, uh, this council, is that they let the people decide what they want for the town. I respectfully request that the council add to next month's agenda a discussion in regards to creating a referendum to allow city chickens in the city limits of Malacca. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any issues or concerns who want to bring up?
Hi, Chris Carlson, 608-965th Street, Malacca, and representing Borghum Township. Last month, you folks may have mentioned of writing a letter to the state of Minnesota encouraging them to hurry along with the 23 project. And if the city was willing, the township would like a copy of that letter. If we can put our letter head on and send it to the same address as you guys did in support of that.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. No public hearing, no request communications. Ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance five eleven, amendment allowing slaughtering in B2 general business district, first reading. Do you have it in front of you? I don't know if there's Tammy, if there's anything you need to add, if anybody has questions. This is regarding a potential new business in that business district. It was passed by planning commission.
Yep, the public hearing was done at the planning commission, and the commission did approve it.
Any questions?
No questions here.
Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance five eleven passes.
Who has the motion?
Uh, were you the motion, Ken?
Uh, I'll make a motion, please.
No, I don't know if it was Cam or not.
Okay, and the second?
Second.
Yeah, I'll check though. I couldn't even hear which one of them said it. So five eleven passes. Reports departments, boards, commissions, city manager gambling fund.
Uh, yep, this is for kind of restructuring the previous gambling policy that we had.
Please. You're good?
I provided as a handout, a summary report from April. I said things going well. Did you report on how long leave that we are about full staffing? I think we got a summary report in April meeting for March that showed a significant amount of traffic. The officers are all self-initiating, a lot of traffic and other type activities. So having full staff allows more freedom to do those things. I was great when they can get out there and go after some of the issues such as DWIs and drugs and traffic offenses.
Good. Thank you. Parks. Approve the survey for the future trail development.
Yeah, we had an individual contact us regarding the homegrown grant that is available, and the grant is available for up to $50,000. You have the map in your packet too of the area and the boundary lines for the city property, on the PIDs, that the city properties aligned with this particular map. Kurt Bowley, Jordan DeBoer have worked hard on kind of laying out the mapping design. So this 50,000 grant, and speaking with the individuals, said this is the kind of projects they're looking for. So we'd really like to get this grant in by the end of June, but we would require a survey to make sure that our lines are all lined up. And I know, I was speaking with Seth Monroe, and he said there is some issues with some of the boundaries, so I think we need to get those figured out before we build trails.
And that would be the purpose of the survey?
Yes.
Get that all lined up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that grant money be able to be used for the survey costs if it's?
We certainly could.
Yeah. All right, can I get a motion for that?
Okay.
So move. Any other discussion on it? Who's putting in the grant?
Both Kurt and I will be working on the grant together, so we'll get a lot of that together.
Through the city?
Yes.
Okay.
The city. We'll do it, get it submitted.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So the grant proposal passes. Public Works, Public Information Meeting for the Wellhead Protection.
Yep, he did make mention to me to just bypass that on the agenda tonight.
Okay. We can just come back to it?
Yeah, he'll come back with some dates.
Okay. Liquor store, is Vicki here tonight?
No.
Nope. Fire department, you guys are here.
Our sideways side is in, and they're gonna put that together. We have the tracks we've received. The pump and tank is in transit, so we should have that. Hopefully by around July, we should have everything put together and ready. Another reminder, our golf tournament is July 8th. If anybody wants to attend or donate, both. The only thing else is we've been starting to spec our engine, which is gonna be next year's CIP purchase, which we've been putting off for four years. We're supposed to get one in 20, and I delayed it because of just, I didn't think we were needing one yet, so it's a little more than we anticipated, but we've also been doing very well with our gambling stuff, so we will be able to help purchase and love to figure out what the townships and all that stuff, how that all work. I don't know exactly. I talked to Craig a little bit, and he said everybody works together and figure that out, so.
Yep, and we would use as much of the reserve as we can to spend that down. There is a good sum of money in there right now, about 400,000. So we would put that towards that pumper truck and kind of, if we have to, we'll do a bonding equipment certificate.
Is that a long process, like ordering out and getting it ready?
Yeah. So we, as long as we get everything specced before the end of the year, we'll have it before the end of the year in '24. So, so like I said, we started the process now.
And then we'll?
Spec sheet's 150 pages long, and so.
And then we'll do an RFP for that as well, just like we did with the other one.
Yep, and they'll, the one company will come up and will go through that spec with us and explain what everything means. Because we talked initial what we were looking for, what we wanted. And I'm not quite smart enough to understand exactly what all that stuff is, and some of it doesn't make any difference to have to have it in there, so. Besides that, it's just, everything's going all right. Besides that is a process.
Good. Thanks, you guys.
One other, one too that you mentioned was a rescue truck that FEMA, they have a grant writer for. That's 500,000 for that one estimated, and they're hoping that the grant will cover 75% of that, or more. So, but that won't be submitted until this fall.
Okay. Good, thank you, Jesse. Planning and zoning, resolution 2316, approving lot coverage and a variance for three-foot setback from property line. Can I get a motion for that? Move for approval?
I'll second.
And any discussion on that? And this was through planning Monday, right?
Yeah, this was through the planning commission for the stimler to cover more of the 60% of their lot coverage and to place a garage within their property lines, and that was all approved by the planning commission.
Anybody have questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2316 passes. Resolution 2317, approving preliminary plat for Blue Water Potato Patch, Malacca, Minnesota.
And do you, Phil Carlson is here. Would you like him to kind of give a little detail on that?
Yes, you do. Excellent job of that.
Go ahead.
Mayor and council, the request in front of you is for a conditional use permit for townhouses on this property known as the Potato Patch on Second Avenue Southwest, and for preliminary plat that would divide that property into the three lots and an outlot. And the planning commission reviewed this, and there was some question about one part of our recommendation, which was at the southern part of that property where it abuts Fifth Street Southwest, there's a piece of another street right of way, and it makes kind of an odd intersection there. And there was a question that perhaps the property we suggested vacating just to kind of clean up the lot lines and put a little more property in the townhouse project, that that might be owned by the property across the street. We, the city engineer and Tammy and I today looked at that and determined that that's not the case. And the memo and graphics that I put together today, did the council get that and see that? There's a May 18th memo. So I think it explains it clearly that what we had recommended, that triangular piece is outside of that other property and really would be appropriate to be vacated, allowing the whole site plan to shift south a little, and that does a couple of things. One, it gets it a little farther away from that slope up at the north end, which might pose some problem for grading. And second, it allows to have a little bit of breathing room between that northern building and the driveway. As it was originally proposed, you had a building right up against the pavement of that driveway as it curved at the north end. So in my memorandum here of today, there is only slightly revised recommendation and conditions on that. The other thing that we looked at, just to make sure that there weren't any utilities in the piece of property that we were suggesting be vacated there. There aren't, but there are utilities along the western part of that property, and so, yes.
I do have to correct you on that.
Sure, thank you.
We do have a gas line that goes through here.
Okay.
And we also have the water line that goes through here as well. And it's right on the edge of this bump out.
Okay.
For the water line.
Okay.
So those do go there, and there's Ballard's markings here for the gas part that comes up out of the ground.
Good.
So there is some, some issues within that area.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest, as my memo pointed out, these details would be reviewed and verified and pinned down before the final plat comes in. I think in concept, you've got three lots, you've got space to put the driveway. We think we can keep it off the utilities exactly where they are located. If you approve this preliminary and the conditional use permit for the townhouses, I'm confident that we can, we can sort it out with their engineers and surveyors by the time the final plat comes in. The other thing I want to mention is that there are utilities in that western part, and so rather than just a 10-foot drainage and utility easement on the western property line, Phil Gravel, the city engineer recommends a 30-foot wide. And as the map suggests, that 30 feet would be kind of the open space that they had already left there and would not, should not encroach even on the driveway that they proposed there. The other piece, of course, that we recommended is that the outlot include the entire driveway so that that northern townhouse lot doesn't include a piece of driveway and parking lot, so that the outlot, which really is the common area, is driveway and that parking lot, and it just makes for a cleaner subdivision. So with that, I would recommend the approval of that plat with the conditions in my memo today, only modified to say we'll verify the location of utilities in that vacated portion before the final plat is presented.
And I just have one question too. So if the city vacates this portion of the right of way, would he have to change his plat at all? I mean, it really wouldn't make a difference on his plat that he has here today.
Well, vacated means that it would revert back to the private property.
But I'm saying, he shouldn't have to shift anything on here. It really doesn't impact this portion.
Well, I think that-
Because you're gonna want to slide it south, right?
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, the, we're sliding it south a little bit to give that little bit of space between the driveway and the building, and then it would, that could affect exactly where the lot lines fall between the buildings. So again, I think the sense of what we recommended is in there, but you're right, we want to make sure we verify the details. And there was also a question of the side setbacks interior that was in this that could be accommodated with what we originally proposed, but we need to, we need to just verify that.
Greg, do you have anything to say?
No, I think it's a good idea. It would also maybe help some distance between the buildings, depending on how much we move it south. So all of those are very good points. And I didn't know about the other utilities, but we take care of all that through our review.
And just to be clear, it was originally proposed, you had the parking spaces right up against that northern lot line, and we can't quite tell from the grading where that slope starts to go up to forth. And we were saying, well, it just makes sense to pull it away from there if you need to. And then vacate the property at the south, gives you a little more breathing room. So if you need to push it north, maybe it's not much of a problem getting into the slope. It could be graded or maybe a small retaining wall. Again, I think those are minor details in the scheme of this project that can easily be figured out.
So you're not that concerned with the whole gas line thing? That was my concern, because it's just sitting there.
Yeah, that's a big piece.
It's not just a line, it's-
Yeah, oh, right, yeah. That we'll, we'll make sure that we're not somehow putting a building on that and that there's adequate easement to get at that.
Yeah, because will you meet the setbacks then if we slide everything down?
Yeah, well, you don't need to have a setback to the gas line. You need a setback to the lot line, so.
Right, because you're still gonna meet that.
Rather than try and figure it out here across the table, we'll make sure that it gets taken care of with the final plat.
Yep. Okay, I don't remember, did I get a motion on this yet or not?
No.
I don't think so either. I think we went right into it. Can I get a motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on 2317? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 2317 passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil. Staying with planning and zoning, resolution 2318, approving conditional use permit for Blue Water Potato Patch, LLC. Can I get a motion for this?
Move for approval? Second.
All right, anything we need to add to this one? That wasn't covered, I think you kind of covered it all.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
The elevation on the driveway would be in regards to the street? The street to the east?
Are you talking about the driveway into it?
Yeah.
What would the elevation be on that one?
I mean, is it, is it, I mean, it's sunk down from the street quite a bit.
Well, the driveway's coming in off of Fifth.
Off the Fifth.
The driveway's kind of off of Fifth.
Yeah, maybe I should-
The driveway comes in from Fifth and goes up in dead ends.
Okay.
So it's not messing with the slopes at the north and northeast corner.
How does that elevation of that new street correspond with Fifth? Is it?
It's a little drop, but it's not bad.
Yeah.
Not pretty much, yeah.
You'll have to do some drainage stuff, but it wasn't, it's not like the other two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I went backwards there a little bit, sorry.
It's pretty easy on this thing.
There's a lot going on.
Any other questions? You good, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 2318 passes. Planning and zoning, now we're gonna talk about an update on the possible annexation discussion. Adam, do you want to explain this a little more?
Sure. We met with both Malacca and Borghum Townships in a group meeting with quite a bit, our city engineer, Public Works, Dave and I, and all of the board, a couple of the board members from each township. So, and then they kind of brought up the idea for when we do this $1.5 million project, that we will be paving this road, and they had made mention of would the city consider annexing in? So part of our next step would basically be reconnecting with the townships to see, are they okay with this? We'd have to check with the individuals that live along that stretch as well. So I'll just turn it over to Damian, and he can kind of give us a layout of how the entire process would work through the annexation at that.
Yeah, so basically, there's three ways to facilitate annexation. One is through what's called an orderly annexation agreement. That's something that can be negotiated between a city and township that basically outlines or lays out all of the criteria for which annexation can occur, and all the terms and conditions are basically pre-agreed upon. It can be done. It's very often a lengthy process. It can be a difficult process depending on the desire of each political body to do that. It is possible for the city on its own action to petition for annexation depending on the circumstances, ownership of the property, touching, you know, how much the boundaries are surrounded by the city. And then the third option is for a property owner to petition for that. A lot of the same sort of criteria apply, but depending on each individual lot and the circumstances of each individual property would dictate what avenue could be pursued. So what I have to give it is this kind of like a map of the overall area and outlines in orange a lot of the area that they're talking about. In talking with Tammy, what I explained is really the first step down this particular road is for each of the townships to reach out to all of the property owners that would potentially be affected by this. They need to gauge their interests. They need to find out if the individual property owners are wanting to do this or not, because if they want to do it, it makes things much easier and much more streamlined to facilitate. If they are against it, it becomes much more contentious and much more difficult to do. And we are not the ones that really have that information, and so that's why I suggested to Tammy that it would be best if the individual township boards or whomever can reach out to the property owners within that area and have a conversation. And we can take it piece by piece if we need to. Sometimes there are people that want to and others that don't, and we can kind of go on the easy ones first and then move down the road from there. So that's generally speaking what the options are, but it's hard to say specifically what needs to happen right now because we just don't know what the property owners are wanting. And we don't know the things like the size of all the landowners or how many, the lands, how many owners there are, which ones abut the city now, which ones don't, what their acreage is, things like that, so.
And I'll back up even one further. We haven't even discussed it. I mean, it just came up at that meeting. I don't know who brought it up. I can't remember which township rep said something about us wanting to annex, and I, it was kind of news to me, so we have not had the discussion. So it's really just, it came out of that meeting that maybe we should just bring it up. And, but there's nothing imminent happening or anything. But it's worth the discussion.
Right, and I can work with the townships, and if you need some help with the addressing, I can certainly help you out with that, get that process going with like a letter of intent of a possible annexation and kind of put the feelers out there for them to see what they think.
We would kind of, you know, like, you know, how much you intend to do before we contact and social guy.
Sure.
Like a map on, somebody drew on what you guys would see, seem as feasible.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's where we probably should have that next meeting with the townships and, you know, kind of focus on this area and, and then move from that point forward.
And we have to have that meeting, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you probably want to discuss water and sewer and everything else.
There's a ton of things to discuss.
Yep. You know, that kind of stuff.
It's a slow moving process.
It will be.
Yeah. But I just don't want any township people thinking that we're like, trying to go out and annex all this property out.
No, it's just starting the discussion.
Yep. Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Committees, we don't have anything to report there on finished business, we don't, moving to new business, update from StanTech on federal grant, D23CP Minnesota 0884. Pretty title. So this is that preliminary work that StanTech has to do? Do you get that process running, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Phil's kind of taking the lead on all that. Do you need any kind of action on that or just information?
Are you talking about E?
Yep.
Yeah, no, that was just merely an update.
Okay. Yeah, they're not in the order in the packet, it's the bottom part of the auto pack order. Now we go to the federal grants, I'm not going to read all that, professional services agreement with Bogart Peterson.
Yeah, Phil thought it would be best to work with the company that's already started the process when the, the townships were going for a grant, was it two years ago?
We would buy a couple different times.
Oh, okay. So as long as they had most of the documentation started, it just seemed more feasible for them to finish with the entire area.
It sounded like it was going to save us some money, too, because there's a section that wouldn't have to be done.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That you need some action on, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Good there, now we're on to the proposal from American Engineering Testing for Geotechnical Exploration for that same grant. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Same area, this is just the environmental part of it, right? The geotechnical, yeah. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That grant passes, liability coverage waiver form.
Listen, we do this every year, and we check that the member does not waive the tort limits. So I just need a motion on that one.
Can I get a motion for that?
Move for approval?
A second.
Any other discussion, like she said, same one we always do? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Reform passes, purchase agreement for purchase of property, White Horse 33 LLC. Is there, there wasn't a map, I knew it was there, of that property.
Just the purchase agreement.
No. It doesn't just... Oh, yeah, beyond that, yeah. Yeah, I knew, I saw one somewhere. It's on this one.
Oh, okay.
Hand it off?
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
With that double for Rome. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move? I'll second.
Need more discussion on this?
I think I have that now.
It's the one that came over here, I'm on this, it's over here. Here, like subway's right there, no, wait, where are we? Subway's right there. So it's that land to the west.
Okay.
Now, there will be some issues that we're going to have to address as far as access. Utility sounded pretty simple, we didn't seem to get a problem with that. You know, it'd be easier if we had that access to that whole chunk of land, but we don't, so.
Yeah.
That's not part of our control.
And even if someday there was an additional access, it would be nice to have a through, you know, through street.
Sure.
You know, where they could be connected.
Plus, this road can possibly be in access the other way to the Pearson property.
Yeah.
It's now for sale, so kind of is a double benefit. And the business proposal is, would be a really nice addition, really, really nice addition for Malaca. Any questions on it?
A long time ago, they talked about a road through the, between where the Barbara Jeans was.
Kind of extending that other road, yep.
Yeah, but I don't think that's going to happen.
No, we, that whole strip of land in the middle there is moving painfully slowly. So, and they want to get moving, so this is a solution that kind of works for everybody, I think.
Yeah. So. And the purchase agreement is the same as we discussed last, last month.
Yeah, nothing we need to know on that, right?
No, I just took the letter of intent and turned it into a legal document with a bunch more words.
Yep. Want to add anything? You're good. Okay. If nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. So that passes, so hopefully that means we can keep moving forward.
How's that developer's agreement stuff, and how's that going to kind of shake out next? I was going to ask the same question, I wanted to make sure that you guys had your own people that you wanted to use, if you wanted to have the city, have the city, have me do it. Yeah, I think, I mean, I would just say, let's just have the city, and I think we have, as long as we have a good general working, you know, understanding of what we want to do, maybe we just get together, have a meeting.
Okay.
Get it together, city signs that, and that would work.
Yeah, that works.
Do it as simple as possible.
Yeah, okay.
Good, simple's good.
All right.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, the access road, this was the addition, access road to the property near the liquor store, ordering plans and specs. This came out of, I don't know where the email is on here, but I know Phil wanted to get going on it.
Yeah, he'll need to design that road.
So do they, so, and this is the first step, so this would kind of get the ball rolling on getting that road figured out and what we can do with it.
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Any other discussion with it?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so we can get going on that. Great. Boulder Ridge Fourth Edition Plat Correction. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. Second.
This was just a simple correction, wasn't it?
Yep, just a very simple, two-foot correction, plat correction is all.
Yep, didn't seem like any problem there. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That passes. Special event application, community grad party. Need a motion for that?
So move?
This is new, I think, I don't think they've ever done this before.
Mm-hmm.
I think on DC Express. Anything at all looks good, there wasn't anything missing, was there?
No.
Okay.
Fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Grad party passes, another special event, Black Kitty Parade. Same as always, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Kitty Parade passes, another special event, Rhythm on the Run Parade. And that is, oh, can I get a motion first?
So move? I'll second.
Same thing, nothing changed there, I think they moved it up a little bit time-wise, right?
Five PM.
Yep. Other than that, same route, same everything.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. One passes, and our last one, Movies in the Park, Two Dates. Need a motion for that? So move?
I'll second.
July artist, any other discussion on that one? Are they going to try getting food trucks or anything for those, are they?
No.
Or ice cream or anything, I don't think so.
No.
Just the movies?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That passes.
Okay.
So it's been, that was what, one, two, three, four tonight, we must have had five or six last month.
Five last month.
Yeah, that's a lot of special event things, that's really good to see.
It is, yeah.
J was in, J1 was an addition, possibly changing the June City Council meeting. Remember, we moved it to Wednesday, the 21st because of the parade the week before. I'm the bad guy, I, my reservations got changed for our family to that Wednesday, so if we can move it to Tuesday, that would be great, if we can't, I'll just deal with it, but...
Can you do Monday instead of Tuesday?
Yeah, I don't care.
Monday's a holiday.
It is?
Is it?
Oh, that's Juneteenth. What's Tues, oh, doesn't matter.
What's Tuesday?
Or, well, we really don't have a lot of other options, really.
Well, you can do it, I mean, if I have to miss it, hopefully, or someone will be here, it's fine.
Okay. So June 20th?
Thank you. What if we did it early, four o'clock?
No, really?
Yeah.
So what, what is it moved to?
June 20th.
20th.
Still at 6:30?
I think so.
Okay.
I was going to ask you though about doing it day one, what time for, like, city employees and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, closed meeting.
Okay.
Agenda, new business, closed meeting. The agenda item for this meeting is to discuss the intent to purchase real estate. This portion of the properly announced meeting of the Malaca City Council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes under the closed meeting for real estate sales or purchases, exception to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D. Point 05, Subdivision 3A3, which states, "To develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. The need for confidentiality outweighs the purposes served by the open meeting law in this case based on the following. Confidentiality is necessary to protect the city's negotiating strength and interest as to real estate negotiations. The purpose of the closed meeting is not to make a decision behind closed doors, but instead is to determine what actions are appropriate with respect to the, to the real estate negotiations. The only business to be discussed in this portion of the meeting will be the real estate negotiations and what action, if any, should be taken. I will now undertake a motion to close this portion of the meeting." So move?
I'll, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council will now go into a closed session, time is?
7:17.
7:17. Only the officials can decide.